Meeting called to order. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Okay, we need to start with a roll call. I would approve call of Dr. Robinson. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Dr. Bunch. Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. James here, we're all here. Uh, now we need adoption of the agenda. But is there any changes on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask us to, for a presentation from the next branch of N W A C T. Make that I have six point zero after five point nine.
Let's uh, let's move it up.
Pardon?
Let's put that at five point three. And move everything else down because five point three we can get back in the boardroom.
Okay. Five point, you'll see we'll make that five point.
Three.
Three. That's fine. And then we'll go to you.
Right, boardroom superintendent scholar. Okay. Okay, any other changes or deletions off the agenda that's not can be approved?
Mr. Chair, I tell Miss Newsom for approval of the agenda with those corrections.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Newsom for approval of the agenda seconded by Dr. Bunch. Any discussion? If none, can we have uh, all in favor? All right, pass this five zero, okay. Now we're, I have number four for the comments. Yeah, not any. I have number five, recognition and presentation, five point one, West Elementary Choir performance. Ms. Ellis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, you better not say good evening. I know you're tired, but we came to bring a little bit of Christmas cheer. So we hope that we do that just on this evening. My name is Ms. Ellis, I'm with West Elementary School. And we have four lead singers. They are Alana Moore, Jayla Matthews, Kanaya Simpson, and Malia Lewis. And we are West Warriors of Change Choir. Our first selection is Santa Claus is coming to town, y'all. And the next one, we hope, the second selection will be Christmas wishes.
You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not cry, I'll tell you what. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's taking a lisp, he's shaking his face, he's running around, who's behind your back? Santa Claus is coming to town. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not cry, I'll tell you what. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's taking a lisp, he's shaking his face, he's running around, who's behind your back? Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows that you've been bad or good, from the good world you've been saved. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not cry, I'll tell you what. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows that you've been bad or good, from the good world you've been saved. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not cry, I'll tell you what. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming. To town. He's coming for Santa, he won't be long. And he's coming. Yeah, 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 yeah. He's coming for you. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming. To town. I wish you peace this Christmas. Happiness I'm crushing. With every joy, your heart can hold. With grace and finally near. May you wake Christmas for me. Into our world and peace. May you find love this Christmas. Under your Christmas tree. Seasons come, seasons go. Christmas is so good. We can keep it in our hearts. Christmas to us are here. May you find love this Christmas. Under your Christmas tree.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
I'd like to give them a quiet round of applause. Uh, thank you, Ms. Ellis. I don't want to be biased or nothing, but. That's about it. The best choir in the world. I might get it wrong. They all went on some. I'm trying to get to here. Probably tell you that idea. Okay. Next, we have, uh, I have point two, our representation, Robinson with Newsom.
How's everyone?
Good.
I represent Robert Lewis Middle School Art Class. I have a few presentations to show everyone. Does everyone can see this? This young lady's name is Ely Asia. And you can see that she has amazing talent. One of the best things I love about her art is how much detail she put into it. She takes her time, she sits in the class, and you won't even know she's there. She puts all of her focus into her work. And does it show?
Yeah.
Yes, it does. This young lady's name is Kelsey. I couldn't begin to tell you how many things this child can do. Anything I put in front of her, she not only does it, but she does extra. This book she wrote is called, Get Over It. In other words, she says, look, people have everything. No big deal, get over it. People have skin disease. What's the big deal, get over it. People have, men do cry. Did I hit a nerve of you? Men do cry, get over it. Men are human too. And it is just as important for men to cry, cry at women because letting out your pain is more healthier than letting, than holding it in. This sweetheart young lady is a sixth grader, her name is Emma. As you can see, she loves the cartoon animation. This is one of her specialties. I'm trying to get her to put a village with this mushroom because it's just as lonely as it can be. But she insists on making this one mushroom the focal point of everything. This young lady's name is Skylar. I introduce this young lady to something called abstract art. Now, if anyone doesn't know what abstract art is, it's simply taking reality and mixing it with your imagination. You don't need any fancy words to describe it. Just take a look at this. She fell in love with abstract art. And she, as you can see, can't stop drawing. She uses color, precision, details, and she makes her imagination run completely wild. And I couldn't be proud of her. This young lady, I don't know if we can all see this. I don't know if we can all see this, but this young lady's name is Tiffany. She loves dragons. Her, and I got that in common because we love the mythical world. She is currently drawing her own animation book with dragons of all kinds. Can anyone see this? So, if you were to see this, you wouldn't even know a child did this. You really wouldn't because she is that good. For some reason, she wanted to be Renee Nonus. She thought maybe I was gonna trick her into coming to presentation. But she has gotten down details and precisions when it comes to still life. Still life is simply taking reality and putting it down on paper. This is what we had as one of our assignments. And she did so well, I just couldn't let her not put this in here. This is another one of our talented little ladies. Her name is Samantha. Another child who can draw anything. And I mean anything. I challenge her, just like I challenged the one who wrote the book. And they not only deliver, but they do more. This was one of her favorite flowers. And I told her to blend her colors and make sure she make it look realistic. She not only delivered, but I, I'm thinking about picking this flower and taking it home. All right, last but definitely not least, Maya. She is one of our developing artists. I started her off simple, and look where she has come. She envisioned a wolf. And I told her to let her imagination grow from there, and this is what she brought me. A wolf howling at the moon. Now, I am proud of each one of my students, but when they give me work this well, I have to give them a standing ovation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. West, make the next uh, I'm gonna do the next presentation for five point three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, President. At this particular time, we have uh, on our agenda, Ms. Joyce Matthews. Ms. Joyce Marcinho Matthews. I apologize because uh, I'm her, I've been promised by her that I would be her fourth husband. I took numbers two, some years ago, I would be number two, now I'm now number four five. Please welcome Ms. Matthews, who has come to us as President of the National Branch of N W A C T. To make the presentation. We do want to acknowledge the presence, I see several of the members who are here. Mr. Ben Tucker, Ms. Emma Roland Jackson, Ms. Shirley Faraja, who took the past office information, and brother uh, Brother John.
Uncle Tucker. Ben Tucker.
I see Tucker.
I was talking about love. So I hear this is Tucker. With the meal, say, first of all, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.
If, 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 I was not ready to start all Christmas, these young people all did it for me. Uh, you all have beautiful voices. The artists are just overwhelming. And I want the school board to know that both of those presenters, those educators who were presenting those young people, I hate to tell you this, but they mind. And so, I claim, they mind, the choir was beautiful, the placement of the voices was great, the selection of the music was perfect. You're doing a wonderful job. My young lady back there with the art. She did not do art with me, she sang with me. But she has done a beautiful job with her art presentations and her scope of development in, in internalizing art and being able to deliver it to the students via the way that they come with talent. Because one thing about public schools, we don't pick and choose. We get whatever we have, whatever is sent to us, that's what we mold, grow, and deal with. What you have. What you have. You can tell, I'm not, I understand that your granddaughter was one of the artists, Mr. Mr. Stray. But we probably have a lot of other parents in here who had students up here and I just always, I always developed and dealt with my parents to get, to get anything done, that's just my parents, we never would've gone to Calhoun or anywhere else. We sold a lot of doughnuts, we wouldn't have made it out of Natchez. So I want to thank the parents for being here and promoting these students and providing that backup that they need to have for some rehearsals that go on and some stuff that might be some paint on the walls, it'll come off and on, but it'll be fine. So I want to say thank you, because I was an educator and this is my heart. This is my heart. You have before you the end up LACP's presentation, which is the second part of my heart, because you can't teach a hungry child, it's very difficult, we, we found a way to do it. You can't, it's very difficult to teach a child who lives in a poverty-ridden environment. It's very difficult to work with situations when parents have to be away from their children because they're doing two, three, four jobs to make a minimum income. It is hard, and this is what we're talking about today. Sections of this report really won't have anything to do with the school system, but we're going to ask your support. We've garnered endorsements from retired education personnel of Mississippi, Natchez unit, we've garnered support and endorsements from the Anti-Autumn Missionary Baptist Association for this report. We've garnered support from the Save the B. Thompson reunion, uh, Save, Save the B. Thompson committee, and we're in the process of getting this report out all over, we want to get it out all over the state, because we believe it's a, it might not be the best report in the world, but it is a scope and a way of starting something. If I may ask you to look at the back of the report and look at the appendix, because I'm, I don't have a lot of time and I'm not going to go through all of this, I'm going to ask you to read it at, at leisure. The append, this report, we have information in here from Allison, Mississippi. Allison, Mississippi is a financial hardship study, and what it does, it discusses of the situation of parents who fall above the FPL, federal poverty level. But they do not make enough money to do any of the other things that they need to do. They are badly there, they can't get grants because they're above the federal poverty level, they can't get SNAP, special needs assessment program, a lot of instances, I'm not talking about food stamps, I'm talking about the, 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 the program that Mr. Supervisor Gray brought when he was on the Board of Alderman, and it helps to put reinforced housing, it helps to repair flooring, it helps to put roofs on houses, it helps to improve the, the quality of the community. I invite you to drive through our community, ride the buses through our community, and you will see what the situation is in terms of housing and other situations. The other part of this information came from Natchez Adams County Statistical Data, the United States of America Statistical Data, and there's a whole piece in here that we pulled from the enduring challenge of concentrated poverty in America, which is a case study from communities across the United States. We did not do, I have the whole booklet here, we only pulled from our state and the area that they looked at in the state of Mississippi, this was about a Federal Reserve system and the Brookings Institution, was Holmes County. So since Holmes County was in Mississippi, we, we outlined our paper the way that Holmes County's presentation was outlined in this pres, in this particular booklet. The beginning of it is a historical background, it's going to be difficult to read in some instances, but we asked them to read it because it starts with the inception of Natchez and we condensed it, and it brings it through of the state of Mississippi becoming a state, Natchez becoming a capital enslavement of, of African-Americans in this area, the Civil War, Reconstruction, the Civil Rights Movement, and today. And the reason we are talking about this, why it has an impact, is because in a lot of instances, when our ladies came out of the Civil War, when they were enslaved, enslaved people, a lot of people were cooks, they took care of children, they cleaned houses, some of them were seamstresses, you know the whole story. But in a lot of instances, even today, we have not found the next level of being able to make a living from, and there's nothing wrong with cooking and cleaning houses. But I'm just simply saying, we have a lot of people who are locked into those areas and cannot move forward. I know you were doing something with jobs and job training, and that's what we need. But if you look at 156 years, that should be some movement. There were always, there are businesses of people cleaning houses and cooking and, and caring for children and caring for elderly people, but that should not be the, a basis in some areas of that's all we can do, that's what, that's what you can do. And we're saying that this affects those children and it affects their lives and the quality of life of, of the situations that they live in. If you look at page five, and I'm going to move quickly, issues that we considered was lack of jobs and lack of skilled workers, the historical legacy of Natchez and Adams County of a two-tiered economy, the lack of a long-range strategic plan to eradicate poverty and rejuvenate African-American entrepreneurship, leadership organizational capacity and trust, and education, housing, and health. The main proposals, and I want to say this on the beginning, this is a proposal, it's a living document. We've had AMB to add to this document since it's been printed, haven't put it in there yet, but they want to add the Unity Park and we're going to add that. This is not an end-all, this is just a beginning, a beginning, to look at this and say, we need some help in poverty areas in this, in this town and in this county. The first proposal is to look at Allison, Mississippi, and to bring it into Natchez and Adams County and to provide, and this was presented to the Board of, we presented to the Board of Supervisors and to the Board of Alderman. This is now you, these, like I said, these are areas in here go to different governmental entities. But we do know that there's American Rescue money out there, and we know that there's infrastructure money coming, and God be with us, more money be coming down pipeline, so we're asking people to start looking. We're trying to be proactive and not reactive to the fact that maybe that money wasn't spent where some of us thought it should have been spent. So the first part is allowing about $500,000 for people who fall under, above the federal poverty level, but don't, they're not at the top balance, and they can't do for themselves to try to fix up their houses, help themselves, and get some additional situations to improve their quality of life, and that's outlined. The second part is something dear to all, a lot of us, I don't know about the age group in here, it's called the Save Save the B. Thompson Project. It's the Save the B. Thompson Project over here, we have a committee, that committee, I didn't name them, I think has endorsed out, out this particular part of this, uh, presentation. We're asking for $10.5 million through Representative Robert Johnson, Senator Calvin Butler, Representative Cockham, Representative Mims, Representative, Senator Sojourner, there are other representatives right in our area, but not immediately, that we know, and we are asking them, because we do know that there's a school in Hattiesburg that has been saved and restored by state government, and we have that information, and we're asking, now in fact, we were asking, the city was asking just a few years ago, they've sold the property now, to restore Martin, which is about one, maybe not even .5, maybe .2 miles from this building on this street, so we're asking for $10.5 million to restore Save the B. Thompson, the cafeteria, the gym, the auditorium, and the other part that Save the B. Thompson reunion owns, and then we have some programs that can be placed in here. We are requesting, and one time this was brought for the Board of Alderman, $1.5 million to re-utilize communities in Natchez and Adams County. A list should be coming to you, there are over 300 and some dilapidated or unsafe properties within the city, but we don't have the county list, so we're asking that the city create a land trust. Uh, get the properties that the state owns and put them in a land trust, hold them for three years, get developers to develop them, we're looking at Habitat for Humanity, but we are basically saying, no gentrification will take place, and you know gentrification means that somebody will move into an area, buy several properties, build five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar homes, taxes go up, people who've been paying the taxes and keeping their property correct are pushed out because they can no longer afford to live in those areas. So we're saying, no, we're not going to have gentrification, but we're going to have a clean neighborhood and we're going to clean up these problems, and there are several things under there. We're asking, um, that the county and the city work with us and contact the authorities to, to develop, uh, of black tourism in the city of Natchez. And we missed it a few places, just a few, but there are so many more. But all this cleanup will help us to get people into these areas, and they have developed plans for other towns and cities, doesn't cost that much, it can be done. We're asking for funding of summer jobs for youth. We're asking that you all think about using the concepts and precepts of workforce development. I'm on page seven, and this was something that came directly to us from people who are part of the NAACP. To plan now, now, before you open the new school, and we're just chomping at the bit to wait for it to be opened and built. Well, we're asking that you plan to utilize proposed vacant schools for programs not currently provided by a workforce entity in Adams County, because we understand if you're going to workforce development, you can't double and triple your entities of, of, of whatever you provided. So some of the things that you are not thinking about, maybe you can place them in whatever portions of these schools or buildings that can be utilized. The whole building may not be able to be utilized, but we don't want to see them there vacant, and we listed Frasier Elementary, we gave you a suggestion, this is not a demand, these are suggestions. Said School of Cosmetology, we're talking about Robert Lewis Middle School, we need that gym over there, we need that cafeteria, and of course, there's a possibility of using class, some of the classrooms that are not going to be falling or sinking possibly for GED and tutorial programs. I've heard lately that the ninth grade academy is being thought of as being an art center, that would be wonderful. We were just trying to think of things that could go on, and tourism in Natchez. Probably 20 years ago, when Robert Johnson was a senator, he brought a program forward where all going or code in or any of your workforce would train people in the tourism entity, train them on how to welcome people, you know, what, what do you say about Natchez? What do you know about Natchez? That was a whole entity that he provided. He worked at one time through, was talking about working through Holiday Inn, they had a whole area up in northern Mississippi where they train people in tourism. That might be a situation that you may or may not have considered. And then we have Natchez College Restoration, we have been in touch with Reverend Reginald Buckley, with the General Missionary Baptist State Convention of Mississippi E., and he incorporated, and he is 100% with us and support, they're developing a resolution, and he asked us to include the amount that we have in here. And then finally, number nine, I told you this is a living document, which we will be adding to, subtracting from, amending, is the Unity Parks for the Anti-Autumn Missionary Baptist Association, they have one now and they want help. There's a culmination here, I thank you for the time that you've given me to present. I hope I didn't overstep my bounds, but we ask you to internalize this information and help us, because if we move poverty out of the way here, and I'm not going to quote somebody, probably wouldn't think I quote, but we, we have a really ongoing relationship, we fuss and fight all the time, but we still remain friends, which crime said this, he said, if you have a well-lit, clean community, and I see you remember that, he said, crime is going to move, because crime doesn't like light, and it doesn't like beautiful things, it doesn't like beautiful art, it doesn't like niceness, it wants to go somewhere where it can tell. So if we keep the community well-lit, he said, crime, turn on the lights, it's like roaches, roaches running scared and go somewhere else. We want to turn on the lights, we want to beautify that, we want to help people bring up their level of, of equality of life if we can in the city of Natchez and Adams County. I thank this board for allowing us to present, we will be back to you, and again, in some instances, we're just asking that you endorse the program, then when you talk to Robert, you say, we want that Thompson program. When you talk to the city and the Board of Alderman, we, we need that money placed in housing. When you talk to the county, which of the programs fit that area? And we didn't recognize you, Mr. Jackson, thank you for being here, he's an educator, we got a bunch of educators that worked on this, this was a committed progress, project. This was not a joyous project. We had all the members, we see President, it's Georgia, all of them, I don't think she's here today, but they were very good, it, it, it kept us organized, I see some others, I don't know if they want their names mentioned, so I'll just hold right now, but, uh, we really appreciate the time that you gave. May you have a merry, safe, and wonderful Christmas, and keep this in your prayers, Adams, thank you.
Now what we do, we are going to recess, and we'll pick up Superintendent Scholar, uh, for a nine-week review meeting up in the boardroom. So now we're recessing.
Mr. President, I also want to recess for five minutes.
I have been motioned by Mr. West, it was recessed, settled by Dr. Robertson, in discussions, none, all in favor. I have deeper way of recess.
Um, Mr. President, this chair, I move that we exit recess and go back into our open, regular, open session.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, taken by Dr. Black, give me a go. About recess, just back into open session, in discussions, if there's none, all in favor. I have passed the five minutes, we're back in regular session. Now we would have Superintendent Scholar. Superintendent Scholar, we're supposed to do, is they, who we have heard?
Please, Mr. Gonzalez.
Who is it?
Marco.
Marco, you're first, okay. Marco, are you on?
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, but. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Turn him up a little bit.
Would you like me to present my information now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good evening, first of all, everybody. Uh, I provided this data with a sheet, which is a basically a spreadsheet of some of the items that we can just kind of follow along, knowing that I was going to be on Zoom. You all have a copy of that in front of you? It should be update on changes dated 12/15/2021.
Eight point three, I think, something like that, you missed eight point three.
You all have that, did, did she get that out to y'all?
Yes, they have it, Marco.
Okay, excellent, all right, so, update on the, the high school project right now. Uh, we've got a couple of, just two changes that have come up. Uh, one of which is a scoreboard update that was requested, and what they did is they took the scoreboard that was in the project and they upgraded it, so they could show player files and some stat information. Uh, so we got a credit, and it's only on one of the scoreboards, so there'll be two scoreboards in the gym, this will only be for one of them, and, uh, total amount for that is $1,920.06. They credited back the original scoreboard, and then they added in the new one. Uh, and then the second one for the high school is, uh, there is some additional support steel that is needed for some mechanical units that weren't adequately shown on the, on the contract drawings, and so when they went in there and they had to put the openings, the structural had to add some steel in there in order to support the curves that, that get it, and these are over, kind of over the cafeteria area, part of the gym. And that one is a total of $28,788.95. I am still kind of working on that one a little bit with the, to the architect, but that's the worst-case scenario on that, and I need to get that steel, uh, released so the steel guys can get in there while they're finishing up to, to get that put in. So if you take the two of them, it's an additional $30,709.55 for the high school, uh, project. So are there any questions on either of those? I'd be happy to answer any questions on.
Is there any question?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we got the middle school, we got a couple of them on the middle school. Uh, we went through and we looked at the, at the doors that, this is the one that says 33R in the middle section of your, of the page. Uh, we went through and looked at the doors for the project. The, basically, it's the doors that go from the classroom outside, and, and looking at them and looking at them with administration, it was deemed, let's go through and select several doors there that need to just be replaced. We, the original drawings called, the original plan, excuse me, original plan was to paint them, to sand them down, paint them, and some of them were just in bad shape. So, uh, Bob actually had gone around and allotted a certain number of them, going around to replace the door and do some modifications to the frames for the doors, where we ended up not having to take the complete frame out, we're able to modify the frame with parts and pieces there. We worked this through with, with the door supplier and some hardware so we can fix those doors. Uh, it was about $27,000 to do phase one. And then, uh, Mr. Butcher had asked to, let's look at all the phases, and so we got pricing on all the phases, and that was a total of 72,758 doors, and I think that was about 33, 34 doors.
And Marco, let me, Marco, let me inject at this point, please. Uh, I asked you to go down, let's look at all the doors, because if all the 10 doors this time and 5 doors next time, because there are two things, first of all, it's going to set it behind, because it takes about almost six months to get a door in. And second of all, you get a better price on shipping because all the doors should be at the same time. I think it'll be better if you got all the doors on site, so when they start, you know, on the, on the door project, on part of the doors, then everything will be on site, because right now, shipping and the time of delivery has been a challenge for us.
I'd be glad to agree, Mr. Butcher, I appreciate that, I appreciate your comment on it, that is, that is exactly right, and that's why we're trying to get this approved overall, so we can go ahead and get, get everything on order, get it here on time, or as best we can with this shipping as it is being. So that was the, uh, that was the first item on there. The second one is some HVAC ductwork modifications in the cafeteria. This is in the serving line area, so, yeah, in the cafeteria in the existing high school, the new middle school, you have the large seating area, and then you walk in, you got the, the serving line, and then you walk past that, there's more doors than your natural kitchen part. The ductwork that was, or kind of lack of some ductwork that was in the service line was inadequate for what they needed to do, so, uh, we asked them to price that, and it is at $9,643. That is ductwork, uh, grills, uh, insulation, everything. Uh, in fact, they have already gone ahead and proceeded with it, putting the materials in, uh, because of time for the cafeteria, but, and I had discussed with the price from Mr. Butcher, but we're, uh, formally putting it to force on that item. The next one is item 43, that's to add an expansion joint in the cafeteria to cover a gap between older newer slabs. So this is something that just wasn't seen when we first got in there until we removed the floors. So when the contractor went in, took out all the old BCT flooring, they found a gap uh, running straight down from the, the back, one of the doors of the cafeteria all the way up to where the serving line area is, and it appears that at one time, the cafeteria was added on to, so there was a newer slab and there was an older slab, and there's a gap that was there. And if you had been in the old cafeteria, you would have been able to see a crack that would have run all the way across that line. So in order to prevent that crack from being back, we're going to put an expansion joint there, uh, which would, which would be ADA compliant, so it'll be very low, uh, to cover that so you don't have that future cracking. The price for that one is $2,783 furnished install. The next item is item 44. Uh, this one is, uh, not necessarily something that came up with, that was on the drawings and stuff, but it, in the corner of, one of the corners of the library building, there is a covered corridor that, that you walk up to it, and you have a, a planar green, green area with condensing units to your right, but the water at that corner, when it, when it had heavy rain, water would come down and would get all on the concrete and get water all down that corridor. Uh, which obviously, you know, you could get a little bit of flooding near you, safety, what have you. So Bob had talked, spoken with the roofing contractor and came up with an idea of coming in there, putting new downscouts down, putting it underground to try to get, uh, get it over to some existing storm drain, uh, catch basin that was about 20 feet away, and so that's what this pricing is for. This is not something necessarily, I don't think that the administration came up with, it was more trying to solve it, what is a problem there that was not foreseen in the drawings early on. So the pricing for that one is $9,909. The last one on the middle school is item 45. We had, as the roofer got up on the cap, on the cafeteria roofing to get working on it, they found a low spot on it, so they needed to fill it in to even it out on the roof, and it's a price of $1,581, wasn't much, but something that needs to get done. So the items on the middle school total up to $96,674. Uh, any questions on the middle school items? Okay. Uh, the last one on there is for the ESAR, and I believe that when we were in the November board meeting, we discussed, uh, having to go to the contractor to, to get additional breakdown, additional documentation. There's a lot of information that has to be done when you're trying to get ESAR in order to get the information needed that when it's submitted in to the federal government for reimbursement. Uh, it's, it's a heck of a lot more documentation that is normally needed during the course of a construction, a regular construction project where a contractor just turns in a pay application and doesn't have to have all the backup, all the invoices and the subcontractors and everything. So we asked this contractor, what are your administrative costs that are going to be for that? And that also for your subcontractors. Uh, so they did put that together, pricing of $42,540. Uh, there, that's broken down between the general contractor has cost, mechanical contractor, the electrical, the glass guy, uh, door guy, so, the paint guy, so that it's all broken out on, on the people that are all having to work, that's, that's the, the total amount. That should be administrative costs, it should be covered by ESAR, but I need to issue a formal change order to the contractor to allow them for the extra cost on it, but also to formally document within the, the level of documentation we're going to need from them, so.
Marco, that's, that's, Marco, I'm sorry, Diane.
That sounds an excessive amount for administrative costs.
Well, it's, it's broken down over several.
Is it, is it for the whole forehead?
Okay, what happened here, because when we first visited this project, we didn't get their approval for ESSER to use, to utilize those funds. So if you really look at it, that's less than one percent of the total reimbursement we're trying to give back from them. Because, but they got to do that right now with air conditioning. They got to go through and, but all that, and the air conditioning itself won't be a problem. But they got to break out the labor, they got to break out the wiring and all those kinds of things.
And they weren't planning to do that before.
Right, because we.
They didn't need to, because the federal government.
That's right. We had not been ESSER approved at that particular time. And let me say, why I have a mic here, uh, what the other thing is on the doors. Uh, at one time, we talked about changing out all the doors. That was not cost effective. So we went back and, uh, Bob looked at every door individually. So due to the fact that the, the, that the doors is a direct bearing on how effective your air conditioning hour work, we're gonna ask Miss Thomas to do a request to see if we can get, uh, ESSER to pay for those, those doors there. But that's, that's why the forty-two thousand dollars. What we wanted to do, uh, board members, we want to wait till the end of the project and then start asking for ESSER reimbursement. We need to start asking for ESSER reimbursement now so that some adjustments we need to make, we can make those adjustments prior to getting to the end of the project.
Let me follow up on that, because I guess it's similar to the concern that Dr. Bunch expressed. So we're saying that the ninety-six thousand dollars for, compared with the change orders, is gonna require forty-two thousand dollars in administrative costs.
No, sir.
Okay.
What we're saying is the total amount of funds, which is over four thousand dollars that we're seeking to get reimbursed from ESSER for the middle school project, uh, the air conditions, the remodeling of the bathrooms and all those kinds of things. That forty-two thousand dollars is what they're gonna cost us to pull all those items out separately from that, uh, uh, four million dollars.
Of the whole thing?
The whole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's one percent, is that what?
That's, that, it's a little less than one percent, I guess.
So why would this number be percent tells today if it's, if it's regarding the entire project? Is this in addition to?
That's to get.
It's in addition to because of the fact that at the time, we were unaware of the fact it was gonna be an extra administrative cost for the contractors to break out all of those items separately like that. You know, the general contractors, you got all the subs, and this is what, the general contractors along with the subs. If I'm not mistaken, correct, I'm wrong, Marco. Seem like the general contractor told prices about ten dollars. And the other, uh, thirty-two thousand is coming from all of the sub contractors. Because what they're saying they have to do right now is, I think air conditioning is the most difficult one to deal with. Because the air condition, they got to go through there and break out not only the cost of the unit, they got to break out the cost of the wiring, the cost of the labor, uh, the cost of taking the overs down, any modification that has to be made. So instead of sending Miss Thomas the whole thing and just highlighting something, they're gonna be very specific on what it is that they're costing, what, what it's gonna cost us. So we can keep a running file just in case you get an audit somewhere, you know, two or three years down the road, that this is specifically what we paid for based on what we requested.
And we were pressed, and we would be really much to ESSER.
Yes, sir. So sir, let me also add too that I know that the cost we thought, but this is not a cost that because they're doing a one-time thing. They're gonna have to do this monthly throughout the course of this. Some of it, they're gonna do a little retroactively on stuff they've already had to do. So they have the full information, but they've got to do this every single month because we want to submit that from Miss Thomas. So she's able then to be able to submit things on a regular basis, uh, for reimbursement and not wait to end the job, put one people on payment in there. Because that's, uh, that's not the best situation for the school, for the school board. So, you know, a little bit, when they factor that in, they're factoring in a certain amount of time they gotta be doing every single month, along with the retroactive. So I, I understand the sticker shop part because I looked at it first and then I started breaking it down and looking and thinking about the amount of time they got and how it's all broken out from the subs and the general contractor. And I should have looked at that at all.
And let me add, when we, uh, when we talk about ESSER, we always raise the conversation. You know, she's expert for us right now. And, uh, she felt it's gonna be a very difficult way to get everything broken out by line items as well.
Okay, so what I, uh, Mr. James, what I'm asking for then is just approval on, on those items so we can proceed with the contractor. And then I will get these items added to a change order and, and bring to you so that it can be formally signed. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm just getting the, the individual items going ahead so we can proceed with them and not, and not, uh, affect the.
It's listed on item eight point three on our agenda for us to act on this.
Right, and you're right.
Yeah.
Uh, we had, we just wanted Marco to go ahead and make a presentation because Kevin Melamina here, we had to pick the car. So we'll, and then we'll get it out, you're exactly right. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, and I'll give you a quick, a, a quick heads up, the change order that you got for the, for the items broken down on the list is really, you've already acted on it. If you recall in the meeting in November, you all approved the change order for some mechanical, a lot of mechanical items and stuff. So the items on change order two, you've already approved. What it is is basically, I finally have it all down on a piece of paper, signed by the contractor, signed by the architect. And so now we need the board signature for final approval and finalization of the change order. So it's not really easy. You got to vote to approve changes. You've already approved all of the items that are in it. It's just a formal paperwork to give you. That's, that's sort of, just so I can address that for a minute, uh, when it comes up later, you'll, you'll know that.
I'm sure, Marco, could you give us a, just a brief, uh, review on where we are with both of the projects? I know you, I did tell you on the meeting today at, at one o'clock. But, uh, start with the middle school, now, you know, now the whole series, to give them a, a parable.
Uh, I'll give, I'll give you the short version, yes, sir. Okay, so the middle school project, we are still on target right now to be able to turn the cafeteria over. Uh, the contractor can be finished there on the seventh of January. And phase one classrooms on January seventeenth. So right now, in the last month, right before Thanksgiving, they moved into the cafeteria and they've been working in there pretty diligently. I think that they're making good progress in there. They got quite a few people working. So that is the schedule that we're, that we've, that we've got. On, on the phase one pod, they're continuing in there, they're working on mechanical units they got and painting and, and, uh, that's been all their work. So I did, I have been in conversations with the furniture supplier too, to talk about his, uh, delivery. The furniture is all gonna be on time. I will try to sequence it in so it fits in with the completion of the construction. So the phase one, the cafeteria portion of the middle school, uh, knock on wood, right now, the school can really do that good with. And I, I've been pretty, pretty happy with the progress of the contractors and the work they've been doing. On the high school, they have been erecting steel. Uh, honestly, I'm gonna tell you that I, I'm not, and Mr. Butcher will probably confirm, you know, will also agree with this, that we're not very happy with the progress that they're doing. We think they could be doing a whole lot more. I have been addressing that with, with the contractor, both verbally but also with writing. I think that they've had a lot of really good weather, that they could have been doing a lot more work if they didn't do. Uh, they've also had problems with steel erector working and then being pulled off to go to another job and come back. So you're wasting a week's work of time, no good weather. So, uh, they're progressing. They've got steel out. They're, they're supposed to start masonry next week, open in the camp, in the gymnasium area. Supposed to get roofing work started back there. We should be getting some stud work finally started back there. I just, I'm just of the opinion they could have been starting out a little bit sooner. Uh, and that's a conversation I'm having with them. And I know that Mr. Butcher, uh, think feels pretty much the same, that their progress could be going a little bit faster, so. But, uh, other than that, that's pretty much what progress is going back there. So the next month, we should be seeing, uh, other phases of the work going, particularly out in the back area of the building. And I think that's, that's, that's your quick parable on both of them there, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just add, we had a, I did have a very pointed conversation with, uh, Mr. Gonzalez on yesterday. And he did make some contact with both the supervisor and the contractor that particular form because I was very disappointed. I go by the site at least three times a day. I'm already working lunch, and afternoon. And there was nobody working. So I did, they, they didn't have two, there were two or three people over there today working. So we will try to work through this, Mr. Gonzalez, like I told him, and I quote, you know, definitely paying you for it, make sure your job moves along.
Yes, and I, and I, I'm in lockstep with you on that. Like I said, I, I sent a rather pointed, uh, document over to the contractor. I also had a long conversation with Preston the other day last night, uh, after he was on the job site yesterday, on the progress. He also agrees and he thinks that it's going slow. So, uh, we're trying to all get together to push Don Baron along as quickly as possible, so. But, uh, other than that, if you have, if you have any general questions on either of the projects, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. I hope everybody has a wonderful Christmas and a happy new year.
Same to you, Marco.
Okay.
All right, thank, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Butcher.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll have the superintendent.
Mr. James, members of the board. Uh, for the first time weeks, we had seven hundred and eighty-five honor students in the Natchez Adam School District. Five hundred and fifty-three were principal scholars and two hundred and thirty-two were superintendent scholars. So we want to, uh, recognize those superintendent scholars today. Uh, each student, they've already received, uh, their certificate at their individual schools, uh, this morning. So, uh, at this time, we have a lot of those students on, uh, the Zoom call. So if you would, Mr. Burrisong, let's, uh, recognize all of the superintendent scholars from Frazier Elementary School. Everyone, please give them a big round of applause. If you're online from Frazier, turn those cameras on. We want to see you all in the boardroom, Frazier students.
Stop shit, stop shit. Here they go.
And they just warm your heart.
There they go.
Frazier Elementary Superintendent Scholars. All of the board members and everyone here says congratulations to you and we applaud you, Keith. Y'all look great, by the way. All right, next, Mr. Burrisong, if you would, go back to the PowerPoint and we're going to recognize those superintendent scholars from McLauren Elementary School. If you're a McLauren student and you're on the Zoom, turn those cameras on, let us see you.
Hi, Emma.
Is that Javon or Javianna?
We have Tam Tanner, we have Javala Smith's, uh, son.
Roman.
Kayla Jones's, uh, child. We have Ashton Minor. Uh, we have Isandre Stampley. So those are my names.
Great job, McLauren Elementary Superintendent Scholars. We salute you today. Next, we would like to, uh, recognize our superintendent scholars from West Elementary School. West Elementary students who are on, let's turn those cameras on. We want to see you. The board members and all in attendance, let's give those students from West Elementary, uh, West Elementary a round of applause. All right, next, we'd like to recognize our superintendent scholars from Morgantown Middle School. If anyone from Morgantown is on, turn your cameras on, please. Awesome, awesome. Let's give our students from Morgantown. Robert Lewis Magnet School. All right, Robert Lewis Magnet School. Congratulations, Superintendent Scholars from Robert Lewis Magnet School. The Board of Trustees, we also salute you. Next, we'll recognize Superintendent Scholars from Natchez Freshman Academy. If you're from Natchez Freshman Academy, turn your cameras on, please. Start fresh.
Finish strong.
Oh, yeah. Let's recognize. Natchez Freshman Academy, great job. All right, Superintendent Scholars from Natchez High School, the capital of Bulldog Nation. All right, thank you, Natchez High School students. Turn your cameras on if they're. Mr. Burrisong, did you have that PowerPoint? Okay, put it up there. That's okay. I saw already videos on that. Okay. And, Mr. Burrisong, you're going to the next PowerPoint, Natchez Early College at Colleen. Do you put that PowerPoint up there? We have any Natchez Early College students on? If you look at the, uh, list, let's just give the whole school a round of applause. There you go. Natchez Early College at Colleen students are on. Let's see y'all. They have those cameras on. Hey, Tavia, we seen you.
Grace Knight.
Hey, Grace. Grace, hey. You guys are doing a fantastic job. We salute you all. Keep up the good work out at Natchez Early College at Colleen. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, we have a change. We're gonna have Nick, we're gonna have the Mississippi Department of, uh, Mississippi History.
You want to mount, keep on our presentation pretty fast, please, please.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time and thank you, Superintendent, for accommodating my request for a few minutes at your meeting. Uh, I, I want to make a request of the school, for the school board's consideration relating to the Abaddon School Building that's adjacent to historic Jefferson College on Highway sixty-one. Uh, but first I want to give you a little background on, on what we're doing at Jefferson College. Can you hear me with a mask?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, since we opened the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum and the Museum of Mississippi History in Jackson, we've been very focused on, uh, drawing people into Mississippi and sending them out around the state to see the places where history happened. Natchez is certainly one of those places. We have several sites in this area and we, they are our highest priority as we make plans for the future. I'll mention briefly Grand Village of the Natchez Indians, where we are planning to raise private money and request, uh, federal and state money, uh, to build a new museum to accommodate the large crowds of visitors and to build an outdoor pavilion there that we, especially useful when we have large school groups there. But I want to focus on, uh, historic Jefferson. to focus on Historic Jefferson College, which as you know, is the birthplace of statehood. It's where the delegates originally gathered to write the state constitution. It was the state's first institution of higher learning. During the, the earliest buildings there were built by enslaved people, and after the Civil War, it served briefly as a freedom bureau, freedomist bureau. And so you can really see the evolution from enslavement to freedom at that site. Our plan there is to restore the buildings. There are eight historic buildings at that site. They're, we restored them when we first took the site in the 1970s, but they are badly in need of restoration now. A couple of years ago, we closed the site for two main reasons. Visitation was way down, we were very aware that school groups were no longer coming because the exhibits and the experience there did not connect closely enough with the curriculum. So we were not serving the public schools or private schools in the way that we wanted to, and also because of the condition of the buildings, we felt we needed to focus on the restoration. So that is what we're doing now, and our intention is to make a bigger impact at that site, educationally, for the people of this community, and in terms of economic development. We will open a museum in two of the existing buildings that will interpret the broad history of this region. I don't mean a local history museum, I mean a museum with the quality and scope of the civil rights and history museums in Jackson. If you think about the history of this region, it includes stories that are absolutely central to American history. The Native American story, cotton, slavery, Civil War, Reconstruction. These stories are told in other places in Natchez, but there is no place where you get a broad overview of that story. That's what we intend to do at Jefferson College. Of course, it connects very closely with the work the National Park Service is doing at Forks of the Road Slave Market just down the road. We think we can tell a really important story that will have a major educational impact there and a major economic development impact. Our other plan for that site is to establish a preservation trade school that will allow students, probably primarily college students, to come and get hands-on training in preservation trades, which as you all know, here in Natchez and Adams County, one of the most historic places in the country, these skills are in great demand, and there are very few places where students can gain them. We're working with Mississippi State University, which has a very strong commitment to first-generation college students. They want to take kids with some skills and some trade background and get them a four-year degree. They're very interested in this, as is Tulane University. We will also talk to Colin, and we have talked to Alcorn. But I think between the educational opportunities we'll offer through the museum, which will include field trips, at the two museums in Jackson, we are raising private money to meet the needs of any school that wants to bring students to the two museums. That program is up and running. I encourage students or schools from this district to take advantage of it, and down the line, who would like to do the same for the museum at Jefferson College. But in the meantime, we also offer all kinds of educational resources online, on our website, and special programs for children who come to the sites that are directly connected to the curriculum. So our pitch is that we are hoping to create a very strong and necessary new educational opportunity at this site, and our request is that the school board take under consideration transferring the abandoned school building that sits between the site and the road to the Department of Archives and History. I don't know whether you have plans to use the building. I know it's been out of use for some time. Because we're just at the beginning of the planning, and we will work very closely with the community as our plans develop for this site. I cannot say exactly how we would use that site, but we are concerned that if it were to change hands, that development could happen there that would make it difficult for us to realize our educational vision at Jefferson College. We are seeking funds for this project from all kinds of, every source we can think of, say, local government, federal government, and private fundraising. We don't have the funds in place yet for the entire project, but we're working on it. We do have the funds in place to begin the restoration work, and that is underway now. I'm glad to answer any questions that you have, and I'm very grateful for your time.
I have one, this is, I guess coincidental, that we have presented a proposal for this particular site in the last month or so, and the last couple of weeks or so, actually, and now you appeared before us.
It is coincidental. I was not aware of that proposal, but I will tell you that we had been in conversations years ago with the previous mayor, Merrick Brunel, about the idea of transferring the school, and we're not able to get that done at the time. And the reason we're coming back to you today is that we are making a request for significant state funds during this upcoming legislative session, and so we're moving along on our plans, and we realized that we really needed to come directly to the school board and see.
So it's just coincidental?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because we heard from Merrick Brunel about, who expressed some interest about three years ago.
Yes, that's right.
We haven't, we've never received anything directly, nor have we received any information or plans or whatever the case may be. But now we've got somebody else who's proposing to put some things in there that can be of service to the community.
Okay.
And all of a sudden, you're here to tell us that we need to save it for you, even though nothing has been happening, and I'm just a straightforward person.
Absolutely. I know that about you, Mark.
Good, because this particular proposal, this person has come to us and asked us to consider deals with helping kids, helping admiss kids, doing all kinds of other kinds of things that will be appropriate in this community for young adults, and that kind of thing. So while, and we decided, well, we asked this person to present us a proposal inviting, to get it with our board attorney, get it to our board attorney, so we can begin to consider his proposal, but all kinds of history shows up, you know, after not ever coming, since I've been on the board before us to ask for, to ask for a problem. So I might be suspicious.
Okay, I get it.
I just don't, you know, you say it's coincidental, and may you agree?
Well, I can only tell you that I'm speaking honestly, that I'm not aware of the other proposal. Obviously, it's the school board's prerogative to choose the best purpose for that school, and I won't presume to tell you what that purpose is. But the reason I am here now is, again, beginning in January, we will be making a request for significant funding for this project. I will tell you that we've been working on this for years, and I have appeared before the, before the board supervisors. I've met with now two mayors. So I don't think it's a secret. I mean, it's.
They own the building.
Right, okay. Well, I'll just apologize that I did not come before you directly three years ago, but I don't want you to think that this is a brand-new flash-in-the-pan idea. This is something we've been working on for years, and all I do is ask for your consideration.
And I respect that, and I just don't want it to be a situation where somebody was trying to do something with the facility, and there's a conspiracy going on to stop it.
No conspiracy here.
I'm just, you shared what your thoughts are, and I'm letting you know what mine is.
I appreciate your candor. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you all so much for having me here and giving me a little bit of your time. I have a folder for each of you. I'm Fay Colpepper, and I work with Mississippi Department of Rehabilitation Services. I'm also Project Search Director of Mississippi. And so before I get into what I want to talk to you about, is my video ready?
And they have a purpose, they have a job that they're doing. They're accomplishing something, something that they've never been able to do before. Looked like someone told them they weren't worthy, and taken all that away, and give them a chance to succeed. You give them a chance to be part of something.
When I found out that I could possibly get a job here in the summer for a good while, and retired 45 years here, I could do it and pay off the stuff I need to pay off, like chug bills, house bills, electricity, phone.
You already planned your retirement?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I told Mr. Garrett this morning, I feel like I'm 60.
He's done very well. He's going to be very comfortable in what he's doing, and we're watching as he's progressing along. He's done quite well. He's a very good, he's a very good kid. He is.
What's your favorite part?
Everything. Putting stuff up, working like this every day, and getting the orders in, going to the receiving, and putting them up, which is pretty awesome. I love working with the elevator. It's a very good experience here.
John Patrick Edwards is planning for a very bright future, thanks to Project Search. Developed at Cincinnati Children's Hospital in the early 90s, the program serves young people with significant intellectual and developmental disabilities. The goal is for students to find competitive employment. The program has expanded across the country and around the world. Project Search is now in Mississippi, thanks to the collaborative efforts between the Mississippi Council on Developmental Disabilities, the Rankin County School District, the University of Mississippi Medical Center, and the Mississippi Department of Rehabilitation Services. The program is a proven success.
They have an 80% success rate. What that means is 80% of the young adults that go through the Project Search program overall, will find full-time employment at the end of that, that training. And that's great, that's really strong, 80%.
Well, it's a very innovative step, in my opinion. It provides opportunities that maybe our students in Mississippi would not have otherwise, but just it shows what Mississippi's all about, all the agencies coming together to meet the needs of our students.
We've actually, from the day of our first orientation until this first transition, they have just blossomed into young adults, from kids that were just, didn't really know where they were going next, to now they actually have a purpose. They're happy, they're productive, and they're ready to give back, and they're ready to get out there and get to work. So we've also seen the employees here at the hospital really embrace the kids, want to help them, and just love the whole process, the Project Search, and they just want to be, they want more and more, so we're excited.
Project Search gives parents the assurance that their child can make it without them.
Always as a parent, you know, you try to put that piece of your concern in a box somewhere, but as he grew closer and closer to adulthood, I wanted to ensure that he is capable of being an independent young man. And, you know, I've instilled him with some of those things that he needs to do that, but I need some help at this point in judgment life, that he's able to move forward with a career where he can actually support himself, and this is his opportunity to maybe have the extra helping hands that he needs to be able to do that.
One of the biggest concerns a parent has with a child with a disability is, you know, what's going to happen to my child when I pass on? And, you know, by having this Project Search program, you know, it's such a great opportunity, not only for the young adult, but also for the parents. You know, this provides the parents with some hope that, you know, their child or young adult is going to be taken care of in the future. They're going to have a full-time job, they're going to make their own money, they're going to be able to live independently as possible, which is a huge thing for parents with, you know, young adults with disabilities.
I think it's amazing for these kids, because when they graduate high school, they have something to look forward to. When they leave, we're getting them ready to be independent. They can go get their own apartment, they can go and, you know, go and purchase, do anything for themselves. And that's the video that people can see, that they have so much more to offer.
In your folder, there's a flyer. It's kind of what's going on today in Mississippi. And so what is Project Search? Project Search is a unique business-led nine-month employment preparation that takes place entirely at the workplace. Up to 12 students with disabilities experience total work immersion, classroom instruction, career exploration, and hands-on training through three different non-paid internship sites. The goal for each participant is competitive employment. The way this is all set up is every time, well, let me go back and say, you know, it started in Cincinnati Children's Hospital in 1996, but the director of nursing noticed that they were serving people with disabilities, but they were not employing people with disabilities. She said, surely we can come up with a program that can train them to get those transferable skills to go to work and be a productive young adult. Okay? So Mississippi joined, started looking at Project Search, MDRS, in 2018. We partnered with Rankin County School District, and we are now in, we have 13 programs across the state, and we're looking at adding an additional nonness next year. How does that work? Who funds this? So there's three entities. There's the host business, which I've already spoken to Merrick Health in Natchez, and they're very excited about this opportunity. They're responsible for a training room, so the interns have somewhere to go every day, like their safe haven, and they're responsible for up to 12 different internship opportunities. In your folder as well, you will see a school recruitment flyer, and that's to give you an idea of what departments are we in. The cool thing about this is, it's not just food service and laundry. It's radiology, it's sterile processing, it's environmental services, it's material management, pharmacy, PTOT. They're getting all these experiences. The second partner is the school district. The school district provides an instructor. MDRS pays, we reimburse the school 100% of that instructor's salary. Also, the school helps select those students out of those classrooms that would fit, or would, you know, be a candidate for Project Search, okay? It runs on a school calendar year, August to May, and like I said, through the year, they go through three different non-paid internships. Project Search provides everything we need to run this program. It's a full curriculum that the instructor uses, okay? The third entity is MDRS. So every time I go out and set up a site, it's $16,000. We pay that. We also have two John School trainers at our calls that will work along with the instructor every day. They're there the whole time, the interns are there. We pay for all their uniforms. You notice they have a polo shirt with Project Search UMC, and then they wear khaki pants. If the family cannot afford the khaki pants, we assist the family. If they need skid-proof shoes, if they're going to be in laundry or anywhere that they, you know, there may be water or anything slippery floors, we provide not, uh, skid-proof shoes. The intern, the student has to be eligible for VR services, though, before we can pay for everything. Whatever that intern needs to do those internships, we pay for that, okay? Also, onboarding. At the beginning of the program, everybody has to onboard, just like you're going to work at the hospital. So there's finger screening, drug screening, you know, COVID shot, TB, flu shot, whatever. We cover what the family's insurance does not pay, okay? So we pretty much cover everything, okay? The other thing is, transportation. We ask that the schools do not provide transportation because in the ultimate goal is to go to work, and transportation needs to be worked out and help that family or that young adult be able to go to work. Not that we tell the school, don't do it, we don't do that, because some of our schools do provide transportation, and that's perfectly fine. Lunches. Lunches, uh, some of the schools provide lunch. Some of the interns choose to eat in the cafeteria. So, we're not, you know, we just want to make sure that the student, I mean, the intern has lunch. Like I said, it runs a school calendar year. The first three weeks is working on being, learn how to be a team player, accepting criticism, navigating around the hospital or the business. And then once they start their internship site, they're usually there from 8:30 to 2:30. So, at about 9:30, they go to their internship site, they stay four hours. And then they come back to the training room and they talk about, how did your day go, what are you working on, what skills are you struggling with? They're also filling a resume, okay? Also, every month, we have a steering committee meeting. The steering committee team is a liaison from the hospital, the school district, and then MDRS. So, everybody knows what's going on, we make decisions together. So, we're always working as a team. Every internship site, they're called employment planning meetings. The intern conducts that employment planning meeting. Be like, I'm Fay Callpepper, I'm in physical therapy. These are the skills I'm working on, these are the skills that I'm struggling with, I need some help. Also, the supervisor from that department comes in and talks how Fay's doing, okay? So, then they have a transition week. And during that transition week, they may have someone come in and talk about owning your own home, or having a checking account, or being able to read a check stub. So, we're teaching those, you know, those skills as well as being independent. We do have young adults as interns that receive benefits. What we don't want to do is take away their benefits if they need that long-term support. Like, you may have some that are on the IDB waiver, okay? So, when we talk about, when we talk about employment, successful employment, it can be from 16 hours to 40 hours. We have, they're called C-WIX, but they're called Community Work Incentive Coordinators that are certified under Social Security. So, they can come meet with me and my family and say, okay, Mr. and Ms. Callpepper, I see Fay is under this Medicaid program, she can make this much, okay? So, we provide that service for them as well. And that's throughout the year, so the parents, okay, now we're going to go to work. Fay's going to go to work after Project Search, okay? We have a graduation. The host business is not, they're not obligated to hire. We do want them to get some good employees, but they're not obligated. They are our training site. So, we also work with businesses in the community to tell them what's going on at Merit Health with Natchez Adams Community District. And so, we want to know, hey, Fay's really interested, I'm just going to use Walmart, Fay's really interested in going to work for Walmart. What skills does she need to be able to go to work for you? So, we can look for a department that has those similar skills, so Fay can work on getting those skills. Also, we have some, we have two young ladies at Baptist and Jackson that just fixed to get their PCA certification. We pay for that. MDRS can pay for that. So, any type of certification that's in the hospital that our interns want to go through and we feel like it's right for them, we pay for that. You also have an intern that doesn't want to ride this, say, the school's going to provide transportation. They don't want to ride this school bus. We can pay for them to attend Project Search, we can pay for the transportation. Whether it be a transit, whether it be an individual, to help them get to Project Search. Y'all, let me tell you, I've been in this field for 35 years. I've always worked with young adults and adults in supportive employment. The outcome rate has been 10% because we don't know. We don't know what a person can do. But when you put them in an environment where they're just learning those skills, they come in with no eye contact, they come in with limited verbiage. Y'all, they walk, I mean, by the third or fourth week, you can already tell the difference in the young adult. They take pride in this. And the CEOs, we have, that's actually our first video, we have many videos. But the CEOs of the hospital will tell you, this program, these young adults, not this program, these young adults have changed the culture of our hospital, or our business. I just met last week with Columbus Air Force Base and Keesler Air Force Base, and we're looking at Project Search getting started there. So, it's a great opportunity for these young adults, who really do deserve a chance, who normally would go home with nothing to do. So, we're here to hopefully set up a site for these young adults in Natchez. I'm from Natchez, this is my hometown. So, I was really excited to be able to come to Merit Health and say, what do you think? And Mr. May said, absolutely, we want to do this.
What'd you say, set up a site, what do you mean?
Have a site at Merit Health, here in Natchez.
And our responsibility for that would be an instructor?
To provide instructor, and then the, we, I'm sorry.
You usually have an instructor that is already working in our system? Or is it someone that's hired?
That's, you know, that's, y'all, that's, y'all.
We can discuss that, and it can be an accepted, accredited person, or it can be a retired person.
Oh, a retired?
Yeah.
Um, I do look for retired teachers for job skills trainers. Because they've been in the field, they know how, what it takes to break skills down. And they're professional, and they're there for a reason. And so, those would be hired through MDRS as job skills trainers. But the instructor is from the school, but we reimburse the school 100% of that instructor's salary. They invoice us quarterly, and there's a contract, there's an MOU in your packet. And so, well, if everybody, you know, if you guys say yes, and the hospital's already said yes, then you'll see the MOU that I will put together for us to sign. And that's just, that's just rolling out responsibilities. The contract would be with MDRS and the school district, or the school, yeah. And that's separate.
Do you work with larger groups of workforce development? Through grant, or is this just simply to the Mississippi? Your program is funded?
We're funded, well, Mississippi Department of Rehabilitation funds this program. And they have-
That's through our state fund.
They have all kinds, I mean, mine's just a smidgen of what we do. I mean, you know, we have so many programs to help, you know, even if some, okay. Let me tell you this, when students are identified, say, a teacher says, I think I've got five, four or five students. Then the hospital, the school district, and MDRS works together, and we have an interview assessment process they have to go through. And the interview's like four or five questions, we give the teacher the questions, or the parent. And then several departments in the hospital will set up like an assessment table, like physical therapy will come in with equipment to show them how to clean up equipment, wipe out those beds, fold towels, for the next patient. So, that's just to see, do they follow instructions, you know, that kind of thing. So, but, MDRS is like huge, I mean, it's a lot of, it's a lot of workforce.
Well, I'm asking that question only because we're working with workforce development in other ways. We have, we are funding someone locally to work with the layer and work with workforce development, I just didn't know how that would coordinate.
Yeah, and if you would stop back, turn back a minute of time for me. I think I should, Roger must have asked a question about how the workforce development, or what part we play with accepted student. I think this would sit in with what we're trying to do overall. I am agreeing with the program, not in Mississippi, but in Louisiana. I have a brother with a child who's autistic, and it went into a problem. Like, he's still in the program, the child is still in the program right now, he's 24 years old. I think that this would be something, it would be a win-win situation. Because right now, what's happening with our accepted student, it's a dead-end program. It's a dead-end program.
In fact, it's the kind of thing we want to happen with all students with workforce development, not just the disabled students.
Right, but I think that would be, yeah, but I think it could be blended in very well together.
Yeah, it does.
And I'll ask her to make the presentation in the sense of context. And Roger, you have anything you'd like to ask me?
Of course. Good evening.
Good evening.
Right now, we were, when we discussed the program, we are implementing life skills, one through four, for our high school's children. Well, we have returning seniors that come back that have taken all those life skills coursework, and we're kind of giving them some repair instruction based on the curriculum that we have. So, our returning seniors will be afforded the opportunity if this is something we implement in fall of '22. And when I say returning seniors, our students with disabilities enroll up until the age of 20. So, even after they complete our curriculum, they can still return. So, this is just necessarily giving them something to return to.
And you'll see on, y'all, I mean, you see the sites we have now, but we're also adding the school district to every existing site here for next year. So, our executive director is so, he is so excited about this. He wants every school district to have an opportunity to participate in Project Search. Got any questions, any more questions?
I was just going to ask Mr. Butcher if there was any way, the nursery program we have over at Valen, is there any way that could be incorporated with something of this nature?
I don't know, I have to say, it's hard to hurry to give the seed because I don't know yet what's about it at this point in time.
MDRS starts serving at 14. They start providing services at 14.
No, but I was thinking in terms of, yeah.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying.
At the work site.
But this program is just for the persons with disabilities, is correct?
It is, but, when we talk about 18 to 21, they have to, it must be their senior year. We have had several students that have graduated with a high school diploma, have passed all their state tests, but they have autism. And so, they struggle with that adaptiveness and social skills. I had a young lady in Laurel, Mississippi, who experienced some trauma in her life. She developed severe mental illness. She went back to the school district, very smart, same thing, passed all her state tests, and got a diploma, but the school knew that this was the best opportunity for her because she's always going to need that support. And so, they held her diploma so she could go through this program. So, it's very individualized, but the main thing is that they have to be eligible for vote rehab. And that's just some type of disability.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Sure.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. James, members of board, what I think, and so, while is recommended that we do is to put this back on the agenda for January, so you can send us a memo of understanding?
It's in your, it's in your pocket.
Okay, so our attorney can look at it, and perhaps we can take advantage of it and take action on this because of the fact that we won't start until the next school year, but there are a lot of pieces that we need to put together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald. During the June board meeting, you all approved for us to buy, to purchase a comprehensive ELA curriculum. We have been working with that curriculum now for approximately five months. We have been participating in professional development, peer tutoring, and peer teaching. And today, we just want to give you an update on how some of our teachers are using the curriculum, how they're using it to track their data, how they're using it to increase student achievement. And so, today, we have Ms. Juana Hawkins, who will just give you a little short presentation of how she uses it on the elementary level. And we have Ms. Erica Tanner and Ms. Ethelis Fields, who will tell you how they use it on the secondary level. And we have, Ms. Fields is new to the profession, so she will be able to share some things about how she's using this curriculum as a new teacher, whereas Ms. Hawkins and Ms. Tanner can share with you how they're using it as veteran teachers. So, it'll only take a few minutes just to come and share with you how they are tracking that data. Ms. Hawkins, we'll be gambling, please.
Mr. James, members of board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald. I want to thank you so much for this opportunity to allow me to present. Most know me, though, I love what I do. I love teaching, I love my students, and I love anything that's going to help me benefit my students. So, I love Wonders. What I really love about Wonders is the data and assessment, everything is at my fingertips. I need to create a bell ringer, it's there. If it's tier instructions, it's there. If it's analyzing the data, looking at what my students are doing, it's there. I created this handout so you can see what I see on a daily basis. So, I have tier two, the power standards, because we know MBE, the test is coming, so we need to know exactly what it is. We're a teacher, and how our students are doing with those power standards. And what I love about it is live. Every day, it changes. So, I can see if my students are getting things, which, Mrs. Morrison, no, we're struggling with it, but it gives me information that I need. It also allows my students to give me feedback to tell me, Ms. Hawkins, I didn't understand this question. And so, if you look at where it says reading literature, we actually went up a point today because I say it's live. And what I do, I look at my data. And after I look at my data, I go to my tier two instructions. Because my tier two instructions, I have a folder. And this is just one example that I'm talking about. It's built in with the lessons. So, as I'm teaching, there's tier two documentation guiding me. In the past, I would have to search for it. Here, thanks to Wonders, it's at my fingertips. For my students who may be struggling, you know, we want to make sure we teach the whole child. There's for tier two, I can play a video, I can allow students to listen to it, and actually read spelling words to my students to help them get a better grasp of the information. And so, I look, then I act on what I look. When it comes to the assessments, quick, easy. We went over theme, as I say, because I'm reteaching it because they're struggling with it. And we had a breakthrough today, thanks to Wonders. The student said, it's not that I don't understand theme, I'm not understanding what the question is saying. So, we realized, she did not understand implied theme. What I did, went to my tier intervention, we looked at theme, she went right across the board. So, hopefully, we match Wonders with I-Rate, theme will increase because that's the one thing that we're struggling with. One thing I want to bring out, that mentions that insurance equity in the education of all students. What I really love about this is it hits every learner. Every learner, learners with disabilities, everyone benefits from Wonders. It doesn't matter what language you speak, what disability you may have. I can, with, just like I did that, I can assign every child on their level. I can give them videos on their level to help reinforce what I'm teaching. What I did at the bottom, I did a comparison with the latest I-Rate nine-weeks assessment. We did 58%. On Wonders, when we did the data analysis, we were at 63. We dropped a little, but we're still doing okay. And so, I love how it aligns, how everything matches. So, I know ahead of time whether my students will be successful or not, and so I'm not surprised. So, we want to bridge the gap, and that's what Wonders is all about, I need to do so. Thank you so much. As a teacher, I love to talk, but I'm trying to be respectful. A nose behind me, thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to hand some cards. These are actual testimonials for our students, so you can read those, just, you know, whatever. Thank you all so much for having us. The last time I actually spoke with you all, by the way, I'm Ms. Tanner. Last time I actually spoke with you all was in the summer when we proposed to, or we kind of begged you all, to purchase Study Think for us. And I just want to say, it's been an amazing experience so far. And just over the past six and a half months, I've watched my students grow. I have a PowerPoint that we made, but what I did, first of all, with data, I chose three standards that my students had been struggling with. One of those is the language standard, context clues, encountering words that they have not encountered before, trying to break those words down. And to decide why the author chose that language. If you look at the sheets, I think it might be the course sheet on your PowerPoint, you can see that, yes, it's under English II data. I have had the BOY assessment. So, for the second standard, which I'm speaking of the language standard, RL reading literature 10.4, at the checkpoint one that we had in November- ten point four, um, at the checkpoint one that we had November the sixteenth, my students had increased by almost eight percent there. Um, the first standard, we have had a huge increase. Um, we have gone from fifty-six point three percent to thirty-seven point five percent increase there, to almost ninety-four percent mastery. So, so excited about that. Um, and that was Common Assessment Two that we took December sec- uh sixth, so that's been the most recent one. And with third standard, that's reading informational, and that's actually trying to figure out why the authors make the decisions they make in structure and form. And my students, according to the B O Y, beginning of the year, we had twenty-five percent that were mastering that skill. And at the Common Assessment Two, December the sixth, fifty-six point three percent. So we're up thirty-one point three percent. And as you know, um, by the time they hit twelfth grade, they need to be reading informational, seventy percent. Uh, I think it's almost seventy-one percent informational text. So they have really enjoyed the program. It offers so much diversity in text. If you're reading the student cards, if you do get a chance to look through here, you will see that a lot of what the students commented on was about the um various types of literature that Study Think allows us to read. It's not just short stories. We've hit, we've encountered poetry, graphic novels, informational texts. Um, we are on our second full unit we just finished, they've had two full writing projects. Um, I love it, I still get to bring my creativity in. And one thing that I wanted to say specifically was that um in talking with Ms. Fields, we both like to get our students up, we like to get them engaged, have them collaborating. And if you spend enough time with this program and you look at the lesson plans, there are so many opportunities to differentiate the learning, to get them up, to have them collaborating, to have them doing peer reviews. And you're involved the entire time, but you can sit back and watch them transform, it's amazing. And I just want to thank you so much. Um, the last slide, I say, I think, you know, what makes us happy, there are several things that we came together and talked about, but in the end, great things are possible, they are happening, we're seeing the change. Um, but it's all about technology, that's what we needed. We needed the students to be in the twenty-first century, and we are there. Um, we're moving forward, and we are dating, we are dating, so I'm excited about it. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone, I am Ethelise Fields. I just wanted to add, as a new teacher, I really didn't have, I don't have anything to compare, compare Study Think to. But for me, I love it. And thanks to my academic coach, I have everything at my disposal. If you come in my class, you think I've been teaching for twenty years. But, um.
Tell me you don't know you forgot.
I forgot. But it, it, it has everything, the students love it, even, I'm not able to, my students aren't able to get online just yet, but we do have a workbook, and I'm able to um sync Study Think with Canvas. So everything that I do every day, I upload it to Canvas, and they can, if they miss school, you can easily catch up. Whatever we're reading, I put it in Canvas, so you can read at home, if you, you know, if you leave your stuff at school or whatever. I love it, I really do. Uh, all of the lesson plans are there, and like I say, anything that I need, all of the text, the, the children love it because they're learning new vocabulary. Um, anything that I need is there. If it's not there, my academic coach gets it for me, and I thank her for that. But that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
And I just, I just want to say that um I've had Ethelise and Erica and my students, excellent students, so I take great pride in what they are continuing to do um in their classrooms.
And I just wanted to add, you know, I'm, I'm not a curriculum coach for, for middle school, and I'm not a curriculum coach, I'm an instructional coach, but I'm on the curriculum team. So things that I learned from you have trickled down, just letting you know. But I'm taking this to another, another level because I just did a P D with the high school teachers. And I worked on showing them how this does not have to be a passive learning experience. Um, and they came out of it, we all were, we had a great time. And a lot of them came to me and said, you know, I didn't think I could do these kind of things. You brought this in, yes, do whatever you can, bring your creativity in. So it's, it's really, it's a lot of fun, it's working well. Um, and I just want you all to know, we're gonna keep at it, and we're gonna make the changes that need to be made.
And our scores are gonna go up?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, that was one of the big things I was glad to hear because so often, our children have missed so much from back here. And when they get to the higher levels and they're not able to do the work, they get very frustrated, and that's when we start having a lot of dropouts. So if we're able to carry that forward, and even though they may not have had this when they were back here, you're able to still show those teachers how they can incorporate these skills and activities in what they are doing. So hopefully, they are willing to bring that creativity into the classroom and help these students to grasp those concepts they've missed and then to move forward uh with what they need to do.
Yeah, that's Mr. Newsom, and also, when I get Ms. Fields students next year, they'll have a portfolio, it always moves with them, and you can just see the growth as well. And we're gonna keep working with the teachers, um, new and veteran teachers who are um just trying to get used to this streamlined curriculum, we're just gonna keep, keep going forward, absolutely.
Well, we just want to let you all know, as board members, we truly, truly appreciate what you're doing for the students here in Ashford School District. We know it's a struggle, and we realize that you're having a lot to do. But the fact that you're willing to go that extra mile and put forth that extra effort to help our students, we thank you so much. So thank you for what you're doing. And as Mr. James always says, if it's anything you need, call him.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much. We appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we have above and beyond.
Mr. James, members of the board, uh for the last several uh board meetings, we have been recognizing employees in the school district who uh go above and beyond. As you all are aware, uh there is a shortage nationwide, and that uh definitely has affected Ashford School District as well. Um, and so it is always our goal to be as creative and innovative as we possibly can to make sure that our students receive uh high-quality instruction from a certified teacher. Uh, we've done very well staff-wise this year, but we've also had some challenges due to pandemic and due to extenuating circumstances. So around the end of the first nine weeks, we just uh found ourselves in a quandary because one of our elementary schools did not have a certified fifth-grade math teacher. And fifth-grade math is a very pivotal uh point for our students. Traditionally, they've had some difficulty because they're now introducing uh multiplication, fractions, and so forth. And so it's very critical that we have a certified teacher uh in those classrooms to make certain that our students are able to uh master those standards and make the transition to uh middle school. And so putting our uh collective minds together, Mr. Butcher, myself, uh Mrs. Morrison, and uh Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Martin, uh our jobs afford us the opportunity to go in and out of buildings to see what's working, who's, who's doing what. And so we, uh, Mrs. Mills, actually, I think, came up with the idea, and she said, well, we have Ms. Danelli at McLauren, who I hear is an awesome teacher, is it possible that Ms. Danelli can work with my students as well? Because our kids are one-to-one, we have this new technology in the district, we thought that was an excellent idea. So we went to Ms. Danelli, presented her that proposal, and she said, of course. And so Ms. Danelli not only teaches her class uh at um McLauren of fifth-grade math students, but she simultaneously teaches her fifth-grade students at Frazier via technology. Uh, she also said, you know, technology is good, but they need to see my face, they need to know my presence. So she also goes to Frazier, I think, two days out of the week, just one day out of the week, to make certain that her children know her physically and has, have a presence and they have access to her. So on today, we would like to recognize Ms. Andre Danelli as an employee who goes above and beyond. She is the first, maybe not the last, teacher who is teaching virtually across uh our school district. So we thank you so much, Ms. Danelli, and we are excited to see uh what uh, what is accomplished, and we know it's gonna be great things. As you all know, that Mrs. Mills is a slave driver when it comes, and it may not be the best word, she is a driver, she is a pusher, when it comes to instruction in her building. And around day two, she says, this is awesome, this is exactly what my kids need. So Ms. Danelli, please come forward as we present you with your.
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate you because all the time when you ask folks to take on extra responsibility, you know, it's always, I can't do, I can't do. She never say a moment of worry, as we say in the Baptist church, she is such a challenge on, okay?
Congratulations.
And given the fact that she's taking on the extra responsibility, we also uh recommend that she be get paid an additional stipend.
Very good. Let me just say, Mrs. Danelli's mother, the, the, uh, this first girl, the other business to Nelly, was just the same kind of teacher. She taught sixth grade, I think, for many, many years, and she was phenomenal. So she gets dishonest.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, my grandmother as well.
Your grandmother too? All right.
But I thank you all for assisting with those students, I really do.
Well, we are so glad.
Congratulations, students.
Thank you, Coach. And thank you so much, you should see us yesterday, you'll check over, right? Thank you so much.
That means we'll all go to them.
Yes, thank you, yes, ma'am. Thank you all, bless you.
All right. Presentation for drama program.
How are y'all doing today?
Good evening.
I'm Dario Gibson, again, I am vying to be, uh, y'all hear me well?
Yeah.
Okay. I am vying to be the instructor for an after-school program for the theater and dramatic arts. Um, so excited about that. So um I'm gonna be very brief, uh, sorry. Um, I'm gonna start off defining what theater and dramatic arts is. It's a collaborative form of performing art that uses live performers, usually actors and actresses, to present the experience of a real or imagined event before a live audience. So a lot of live work is gonna be going on after school in this program. And I'm just gonna go through the benefits of what theater and dramatic arts would have on students. This before you, this handout is an outline of the classes I plan to teach and subjects broken down that I can get into with the students and explore their different talents and interests in order to best uh use them for the class. Um, so benefits would be, it boosts self-confidence for students. Um, it influences them to take on more risk in every aspect of life, whether it be in class, in job, um, and to all around just trust their instincts and their first ideas. Um, it also teaches students how to let go and just have fun. Uh, often we get caught up in our heads, and we're too scared to look silly, but everyone knows that a true actor isn't afraid to make a fool of himself. So, um, so, um, yes, theater, theater would be great for um teaching our students how to let go and just have fun and enjoy the moment. Um, really keeps them in a youthful state. Um, it also helps them with collaboration and cooperation skills. It teaches them how to work as a team player and to understand others when in a professional or working environment, also with problem-solving skills. They will be in a lot of situations where they have to be quick thinkers. Um, when you're in front of an audience and you're acting or you forget a line, you have to quickly improvise to continue telling the story that the play is all about. Um, and it also benefits with imagination and memory, memory goes without saying, they have to remember the lines, um, and imagination. It helps them in making creative choices, creative decisions, and new ideas and more material than any other aspect of their school, scholastic life. Um, it also teaches them empathy and tolerance for others. Telling different stories from different perspectives and acting in different roles um gives the students to understand different lives and different paths and different times. So they'll understand what different environments they will be placed in as solid character. And last but not least, social awareness. Um, theater is a huge subject for teaching actors, actresses, and students on current um past and maybe predictable social current events. Um, so yes, different literature pieces as plays, um, poems, songs, different things that we'll be working with will keep students up to date on what's happening now around us. Um, also, there's a portion of the class for our students who do not necessarily want to perform. We're always gonna have those kids who are shy or have stage fright and not necessarily want to get in front of the camera. So, um, on the back of your handouts, there's a position in theater called the technical positions, which are crew. And they are your lighting designers, your set designers, your sound designers, your prop managers, your costume designers, and um stage management, which is our assistant to directors. These students are responsible for making sure the whole show goes up. This is basically the backbone of theater. Um, yeah, so actors and actresses are on the front line, telling the story on the stage to the audience, but the person who is responsible for making sure the whole production goes through will be the director, the assistant to the director, and or a stage manager for theater, and the crew. So that's my brief presentation on the benefits of what theater and dramatic arts would have our students. And yes, any questions?
No, I just want to say that this, Mr. Butcher and Mr. West, we were all talking about workforce development. I've got a movie set on my street right now, while they're putting together a horror movie, and they're doing all of these activities.
Right.
Studying the drama is as much workforce development as anything else we're doing in, in, in this city for workforce development. So I think we, I, I think this has great future for, for this district and what we're gonna move toward hopefully uh in the future. So thank you so much, Dario.
Thank you.
I can't wait for the first place.
Yeah, we're, we're ready. Oh, yes, I forgot to mention that, the end goal for the course is the product, the um shows that we'll be producing. So the whole point of it is to start the district on having Black History programs, holiday programs, spring and or fall shows. So yes, we're looking forward to putting on a play for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Out of number six, approve of min- approve of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular board meeting. Approve of December the third, twenty twenty-one, joint special call board meeting. Approve of December the seventh, twenty twenty-one, special call board meeting. I'm muted. Can I get approved?
He has no objections on the number that we accepted. Second.
Uh, I guess, uh, you, okay, out of number seven, approve of consent items, anything that comes in our meeting is the action items. But it's good. That's being good approval.
I move for approve of consent items, seven point one through seven point six.
A seven. Move for approval, uh, seven, seven point one through seven point six, approve of consent items. Seven problems, West, any discussion? None, all in favor? Five zero. Number eight, approve of action items, eight point one, approve of eight point one and eight point one eight. It's right.
Season screenings, Mr. James, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I am presenting the personnel board report, eight point one and eight point um one eight. If I can see this, this is a recommendation of the superintendent that the Ashford School Board uh proceeds approved the batch personnel changes and documents agreement.
So, second.
Second, by the board, any discussion? None, all in favor? Uh, five zero. Eight point two, Mr. High. Item number eight, two, Mr. Howard.
Good evening, Mr. James. Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDowell, Ms. Fields. Item eight point two, approval to accept bid on sixteen section land. Section one, township Eight Noit, range three west, one hundred seventy-nine, twenty-nine acres. The minimum bid starting at eighty-five dollars. The background information on this lease is, the agricultural lease on the above-mentioned section expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Advertisement and bid information was sent out to all acquiring parties interested in the above-mentioned land. We are requesting permission to accept the highest bid for the above-mentioned sixteen section land. The superintendent's recommendation is, is recommended that the board grant permission to accept the highest bid for the agricultural lease on the sixteen section land.
What's the highest bid?
We received only one bid, which is the current lease fee, which is Big River Farms. Mr. W. D. Reeves, he's present. It's the only bid we received.
What is the bid?
The bid, all information on the outside is correct. The bid sheet is filled out correctly. His bid amount per acre, he's bidding the minimum bid of eighty-five dollars per acre for a total of fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. We're requesting permission. So he's only bid, so we're requesting permission that if this bid would be accepted.
Okay. Can we get approval?
Second.
There is, we got, West, second round. There's Lucy. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Five.
Five, two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, eight point, eight point two, already done.
Yes. Well, of course, we are.
We'd already made. Nine, item nine, I don't think. I don't think we're already.
He said that sort of, but just be, just be safe.
I approve that we accept, I move that we accept the change orders from the high school and middle school as presented by Ms. Thomas.
Over to Dr. West, certified, Ms. Lucy. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Five, five. Okay, item number nine, administrative reports of updated reviews and information. Nine point one, Mr. Williams.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, deputy superintendent, staff, I hope I am coming through clearly.
You are.
All right. Awesome. Well, I'm putting in the packets out of November financial statements. And I just would like to make sure I apologize for it. Maybe I have any questions?
Request? Nine point two, Tennessee.
Good afternoon. Before you have the technology monthly report, do I have any questions?
Any questions? Nine, thank you, Miss Tennessee.
Thank you.
Nine, nine point three.
Good afternoon. Before you have the several programs, S. sir, one and two reports for the month of November, are there any questions?
How are you holding up, Ms. Thomas?
We're doing pretty good. Same good, Dr. West. Good.
Okay, then. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Nine point four is the board account. Anything you see needs to be added or taken off the board account? Please get with, Ms. Davis. Nine point five, superintendent update.
Any items have anything else to add? Or do you need to make the decision already? But as you know, the administrator's system is out most of the day to day. But she was about to relieve, her child was missing out. So...
The child got suspended from school.
Oh, okay. Yes.
She said Ms. Davis' child got suspended from school.
Congratu- congratulations.
I'm just joking. Her child graduated from school. I'm just ribbing.
That's why I said, David.
I'm ribbing her kid.
What, what degree did she get?
She went for positive college.
Very good.
I don't have to hire her.
I don't have to, give me a paddle or something and then head to the schoolhouse.
And the next thing we got is school board report. Dr. Robinson, you have anything?
No, I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, safe, and Happy New Year.
Okay. Mr. West.
So what happened?
You know, we're Dr. Robinson, we see.
Dr. West.
The only thing I do want to add, though, is that how proud I am, Ms. Morrison, of what, what's happening with the English curriculum. I think that has great possibilities. And I thank you and all of the English teachers. I know they've been working hard. I appreciate that. See, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Okay.
In addition to wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, I just have to say how thrilled I was with the performance by the choir today with the art presentation. When the art teacher got up, I was saying, you know, she's, like, she's not going to talk or not going to say anything. She got up and started talking about those kids' artwork, and it was just great. So, you know, it makes you feel so proud when you see the, the work that our students are doing. The choir, the art. And then when the English people came in and they shared with us what they have been doing, and I'm saying, oh, my God, look at the difference in where they were and what they are up to now. So it seems that we have finally gotten some things in place that are really being very effective for our students. And I just want to tell everybody to keep up the good work. When you come back in January, we'll be ready to continue to move forward. Thank you all.
Great. I would like to wish everybody a positive day. Also, like, want to thank you all, the board, the board in this town, and all those teachers, I want to congratulate them with the tour that's going on, these teachers that stay in late, that's going to come back in early that week. You know, giving up a little bit of time to come back in and get these kids that need you. I just, I'm just proud of everything that's going on for this family. And I just keep going. Okay?
Well, just, just, Mr. James, members of the board, I just want to add, please, don't forget tomorrow night, we have a concert. You know, we will observe all the CEC guidelines because, you know, we have, we'll be limited, there's a few that's right. But thanks to Mr. Fields, we'll be live streaming the whole, you know, the whole program at every different time. So let us say, as to all the board members, we hope that you and your families are very safe and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay. I just, I apologize, because Mathis had asked if we could make this part of the record. So if there are no objections, just to put, make it a part of the record and put it in his, the presentation from the NAC. If there are no objections, that's a great point. You just make it far.
Do we need a motion to do that?
No. As long as there are no objections.
Okay.
If there are any objections?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I didn't know, you know, that a lot of times you'll say we need a motion to make sure it's, it's a part of the record. But however it goes, I'm fine.
It's kind of like, something they say that more than...
So now we can go into...
Exactly.
What, what determination we do, the permit? I need to do, we do, I need to take a day.
Mr. Field, I move that we go into close determination to decide if there's need for executive.
Second.
Okay. When we make the motion, I'll be going to step in there. We go into close determination to decide if we have a need for it. All in favor?
All right.
I pass.